Go online. Thank you.
For need is made it in the house.
Yeah. Just remove, not eleven percent. Okay, you all. Where the hell? Yeah.
Yes, sir.
Do you have another prayer in you for this year?
Uh, Dwayne? Yeah, I do.
Knock it out, knock it out.
I do.
Okay, we're gonna have Gerald do the prayer. We're gonna have Sly lead us in the pledge. Rest of them.
And look and listen.
All right. Are you ready? It's called a meeting of order. This will be board of supervisors meeting for December the 25th, 5:00 P.M. We're gonna ask our supervisor Gerald Steen to lead us in the prayer. We will have Mr. Will Sly to lead us in the pledge. Thank you all.
Let us pray. Father, Lord, as we gather tonight, Lord, we just have many blessings, Lord, to praise you far. Father, we just want to lift up our country, our nation, Lord. As we have many people who are hurting, Lord, whether it's through storms or other things, Lord, that they're hurting about, Father, we just ask that you would lift them up, Father. We also pray for our county, Lord. We ask that our county would continue to grow, Father, and we thank you for that for this year and 2021. Father, we thank you and pray for our leaders, Lord, that make decisions, Lord, daily to help us throughout our growth areas, Lord. But most of all, Father, we just thank you for who you are and being our Savior, Lord, and having patience with us, Lord, at times, Lord, that I know that we do not deserve. But, Father, we just ask that your blessings continue to be upon us, Lord, in your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Attention, salute, pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ooh gee. All right, we're gonna start with, uh, do we have, do we have minutes here?
Uh, yes, sir, you should have a copy in front of you of the minutes.
What I thought.
Yep, I hear.
And online.
Did you get a second on the motion to approve the minutes?
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Let's see, it wasn't actually on this agenda since I'm just picking it up.
I believe we have no concerned citizens.
Mr. President, there are no concerned citizens registered here tonight or pre-registered on the agenda. Under public hearings, you have notices to increase assessment. We have called all parties, no one is present to protest.
Okay. Down the consent item then. Do we have, uh, did we have any, uh?
You go open the public hearing first.
We had, we do have to go with the public hearing, but there's nobody coming to say no.
That's correct.
Um, so we need a motion to go into the public hearing.
Question.
Is there a second? All in favor? Okay. Our tax assessors here.
Good evening to everyone. We've got three items under public hearings tonight. I do have a correction on one of them. We've got a Mary C. Wisenand Estate, 104 Linden Cove, Madison, Mississippi. That is notice of increase for 2021. If anyone is here to speak on that matter, I ask that they come before the board at this time. We've got Martinrea Automotive Structures USA. The, uh, the letter shows 2019 through 2021. They were properly noticed for the years that applies here. It should be 2020 and 2021 only, not 2019. And then we've got Stonebrier Commercial Finance, uh, increase for tax year 2019. Again, if anyone's here to speak about these, please do so at this time. If not, I'll ask the board to close the public hearing and approve these with a vote.
Can we get a motion?
Question.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Now, uh, we will go ahead and grant the assessments. You got a motion on that?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kennedy.
Okay. Concerned items except for item number 11 should be removed.
Motion to approve, uh, consent item, all except 11.
Yeah, consent.
Second.
All right, this is, all in favor?
Hey, Mr. President, on the consent on item, on item 11.
Yeah, item number 11.
I was gonna ask Shelton a little bit about it right quick.
Okay. Sunset Hill LLC.
Yeah, there's no attachment.
Uh, yeah, the one you asked us to pull off number 11, do you?
I'm sorry, sir, number 11?
Yeah, Sunset.
Uh, you may recall at the last meeting that someone appeared asking for a tax exemption for Sunny Brook and for, uh, for this, uh, item on number 11, Sunset Hill. The documents that were provided only referenced Sunny Brook. I gave them until Friday to provide the documents, and I forgot to take it off the agenda when they did not provide the attachments. So I'm hoping that that will be provided for a subsequent meeting.
Okay. All right. And we did remove it.
Okay, thank you.
Can we go ahead and, uh?
Carry the vote.
Carry the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Good, good, good. Business item, Trey.
Yeah. It's time again to redistrict and in an effort to be as transparent as possible, I'm making the recommendation that we hold a public hearing. And at least two weeks before the public hearing, we post the supervisor lines that have been preliminarily agreed on by the board. So the public have fourteen, at least 14 days, if not longer, to study the lines, come to the public hearing and either, uh, have written questions put in or comments verbally by coming and, uh, taking part in the public hearing.
Mr. President, I would, I would like to hear from Tommy and just see what his thoughts was or is.
Okay, well, I see Tommy's name. Tommy, could you come forward and let, let the board know what, uh, what your thoughts on what, and we had, I think we had some discussions about that. I knew we were gonna have a public hearing.
Yes, sir.
Not a public hearing, but a, a public opportunity too.
Yes, sir, Mr. President, members of the board. I'll just speak to the, really, three aspects of this. The, first of all, the purpose of a public hearing. Secondly, the format that we would recommend. And then finally, the date that we would recommend and how you would conduct that. The, um, the, the purpose of the public hearing, first of all, under Section 5, which no longer applies, Section 5 required public hearings. Since Section 5 no longer applies, public hearings are not required. But we do recommend that it is a very good thing to go ahead and have a public hearing because the purpose of the public hearing is to receive input from the public about the redistricting process, about what the public would like for you to hear in terms of the decisions you'll have to make in redrawing the lines. And so the purpose is, is to hear from the public and to obtain input. We designed the format of the public hearings to try to achieve that. And the way we would propose conducting this is that you would meet here in the boardroom. And myself and CMPDD, CMPDD, of course, are the demographers who are actually drawing the districts. They, um, we would conduct the public hearing. You would be here, you would call it to order, it would be an open meeting. We would conduct the public hearing, we would provide the benchmark plan, we would provide the census numbers, we would go over those, and I'll talk about the legal issues just generally that the board needs to make sure they address. And then, um, and then there would be a time allotted for any member of the public to come and, um, and say anything they wanted to say to you about the redistricting process. Also to submit any written materials that they may want to submit as well for your consideration. And we would recommend that you, you have this as a standalone public hearing so that the sole focus would be for redistricting and nothing else. Do it at a time in the, in the evening that would allow people who may be working during the day to come and attend the hearing. So we would suggest that you start it around 5:30 or 6:00, whatever works better. And that you also leave the record for the public hearing open for, for a week afterwards to allow the public to make any additional submissions or submissions. They may come to the public hearing and hear something they want to comment on or that they want to submit some documentation on, and you give them time after that to do that. And then you'd close the record for the public hearing. And then, um, that would be a, an important part of the information that you would have before you as you're trying to decide how to redraw the districts. And, um, so the date we would suggest for this would be January the 25th. That's a Tuesday. And it would be at whatever time, either 5:30 or 6:00 P.M. that evening. We suggest there's a notice of public hearing that we would prepare and that you would, um, you would publish that in the Madison County Journal, you'd publish it on your website. And you would remind everyone at your regular meetings that you'll have in January, first Monday and third Monday, of the date for the hearing. And so, um, that's generally what we would recommend would, would happen. And as to, um, Mr. Baxter, you suggested in your motion to have maps available two weeks ahead of time. We think that, uh, that's a, taking the benchmark plan, the, you know, the districts that are there with the numbers, we think that's a good idea. And, uh, so we would suggest publishing that, uh, two weeks ahead of time on your website. We think that would be a, a good thing to do. So generally, that's, that's kind of what we would recommend and what the format would be. And I'll be happy to entertain any questions that any of you might have.
Okay. Anybody got any questions?
Well, I'm sure since this is my first skill at redistricting, I'll have questions in the future. But since we've already met today, I've got some of them cleared up.
Good.
But I'll have, I'll have some in the future. And I, I hope that the public has plenty of questions for you also. So they better understand the process that we're about to go through because it definitely affects everybody in the county. And it's, it's important that everybody's equally represented and that, and fairly represented. So, thank you.
Well, that's for sure. I'd like to go ahead and entertain a motion to, uh, since our attorney has kind of laid out an outline, uh?
President, I would, I would make a motion to, um, and again, Tommy, I appreciate you outlining, you know, the, uh, the way to move forward with this. And I would like to make a motion to have it on January 25th, 6:00 P.M., here in this boardroom. And for you and CMPDD to, uh, to head that public hearing up. So that's my motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor of having a public hearing? And of course, I think there's also included the, uh, being able to, I guess, show some kind of mapping within two weeks of, before that hearing.
That's right, the benchmark plan, yes, sir.
It's going on our website. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? If you're in favor, have it.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board.
See you later, Tommy, you can get off the clock. Okay. Next, uh, let's move quickly, there's a football game going on right now. Gerald Steen.
Mr. President, I'll make mine quick as well. We have, uh, two lobbying firms, item 34 is Butler Snow and item 35, 5 is Clearwater Group. And I would just make a motion to approve, uh, one at a time, uh, Butler Snow's, um, lobbying, uh, firm to continue to do lobbying for us on the federal and help on the state level as well. So that's my motion, Mr. President.
Is there a second? Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, next.
Next is item 35, Clearwater Group, uh, same, uh, same motion. They, they work on the state level with their legislators as well, and I'd make a motion for approval.
Motion.
Is there a, oh, you second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Our next, uh, business item is gonna be representatives from the Mount Zion Missionary Baptist Church. Attorney Wesley Evans. Hey, Wesley.
So, can I take this off?
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
You far enough away from me?
Ladies and gentlemen, I'm Wesley Evans, I'm a lawyer, practicing here in Canton. I represent Mount Zion Baptist Missionary Church. Also with me today is Deacon Fletcher Hawkins. I'm here for the purpose of asking for, uh, tax exemptions that are available under Mississippi Code 21 dash 31 dash 1, uh, arguing that their property is exempt. Almost 20 years ago, the area around Mount Zion Baptist Church was completely different. There was houses here and there, but now that, that area has changed. Particularly parcel, uh, 92 dash 24 dash 44, uh, some of those houses were taken down and parking lots were constructed. Parcel 44 across the street from the church is actually a, a open field that the church utilizes for overflow parking. There are no structures, we don't drive, derive any profit or, uh, money from, from that area. Also, uh, parcel 400 and parcel 402, uh, actually, the new sanctuary, sanctuary which was constructed on those parcels is right next to the old parcel. So obviously, we'd ask that that the actual sanctuary would be exempt from taxation. Also, uh, parcel 405, which is, uh, across from the church is actually now, maybe 20 years ago, it might have been a house on there, but now it is a concrete parking lot which we, of course, utilize for parking. And also, uh, parcel 433 is a concrete slab which the church also utilizes for overflow parking. Now, I think we put on the application parcel 395, we were withdrawing that request because actually there's still some structures on that, uh, piece of land. So those five, uh, parcels, those, uh, they were requesting that the board supervisors give, give Mount Zion Baptist Church a tax exemption as, I believe, required under Mississippi Code. If you have any questions, you can ask me or Mr. Hawkins.
Okay, anybody have any questions?
Mr. Attorney, have you looked at this?
Yes.
Good deal.
Motion to approve? I'll second that motion, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you for your time.
Right. To you.
See you, Mr. Evans.
Okay, good to see you.
Thanks, Wes. All right. All right. I think next we have, uh, representatives from, uh, Goodwill Industries.
Yes, Mr. President, just for clarification, this request is for personal property only. They are leasing their buildings, so this request is for personal property only.
Personal property only, okay.
Thank you, good evening, board. My name is Brad Stefani, I am the new, um, president and CEO of Goodwill Industries of Mississippi. And, um, our organization since 1957 has been serving the needs of severely disabled folks, helping them get, uh, employment within the state. And recently, we have expanded our services to include virtual, uh, reality training, virtual interviews, um, working in some of the prison systems, helping folks get prepared for reentry into society. I come on board with plans, and our strategic plan takes us to, uh, really expanding services into more of the 59 counties that we serve in Mississippi. In order to do so, we're also expanding our retail, uh, program to include new goods, uh, which apparently those new goods are subject to the ad valorem, uh, inventory tax. And what we're asking is an exemption for Goodwill Industries on those new goods that we bring in so that, uh, we can make sure that all of those funds go towards our mission.
All right. Any questions, anyone else here?
What does the, what does the statute say about that, Mike?
All right, can you?
What does the statute say about that? Can we do that?
It's, uh, charitable provision, so it's exempt.
So we're good to go there? We're good to go.
Yeah, they, they've gotten their, uh, it's exemption and it has a, it's bigger state certificate. It's from 1956.
Yes, it is.
But, uh, you know, uh, it looks, looks authentic, so I'd say yes.
Mr. President, I'd make a motion for approval.
Is there a second? I'll second, all in favor?
Aye.
All right.
All right. Thank you very much.
All right. Okay. We have, uh, next on the agenda?
Kerry Manager.
Uh, Kerry Manager. Okay.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
I'm here before you this evening to ask, uh, your approval of the, um, budget for the, um, Madison County Megasite Alliance Fire District for our 21, 22, uh, budget. I think you've been provided a copy of that. And then the other item, uh, that kind of goes along with that is a request to purchase some equipment that the board felt we needed, uh, on the truck to, uh, better be prepared, uh, to respond. So those are the two items that I would ask you to consider approving.
Okay. Can we get a motion on that?
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Is this for item 38 and 39 or?
Yes.
That's your motion, yes, sir.
Okay.
And the fire equipment.
Your motion, Mr. Baxter.
Yes.
And the fire equipment, uh, figure you have there is the fire equipment you're talking to us about now.
Yeah. You got equi, well, I got equipment on this one, I gotta go to the next one. Okay, let's see here. And I didn't look at the other one you brought, fire purchase, equipment purchase. Okay.
That's energy distribution.
All right. Axle blades, two. Okay, uh, we've got a motion and a second, right? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Got it?
Thank you, Kerry.
And aye.
You said a. Okay. Okay, next we have, uh, the fire coordinator.
Hey, good evening, supervisors, and Merry Christmas.
Okay.
Tonight I have good news to bring to you that the, uh, Southwest Madison County Fire Protection District, which is under Supervisor Steen and Supervisor Bank Districts, they have their fire rating approved, which is lowering it from a nine to an eight.
Good.
And, um, we've been working on this for a couple of years and finally got it passed. And we're looking at a couple of more improvements we're gonna do to the district. And I'll say within two years, we'll be from an eight to a seven.
Okay.
What kind of monies does that, uh, would save on the insurance?
I'm, I'm not sure, different insurances will give different rates, but it'd probably be anywhere from, I'd say, 10 to 30 percent.
Okay.
And that's from the nine to the eight? And if it goes from eight to seven, that's?
That would even be another good increase. We, we weren't just a nine, we were a nine AWS, meaning alternative water supply, which that, that's your worst nine, you could say. But now we've gone to an eight, so that's gonna be a, a good drop in insurance, right?
Okay, so you, you're probably looking at at least closer to the 30, 30 percent at most.
I, I hope so. Like I said, different insurance companies will discount at different, different rates.
How are they gonna get that out to the, uh, to the homeowners in that, uh, affected area?
The Lake, Lake Cavalier and Lake Lorimer are gonna send it through their Facebook page and their homeowners association things. But we'll just have to, uh, well, and to back up, the rating bureau has notified all insurance companies that, uh, service that area to let them know that the rating is in decrease. But, um, we'll try to get it out to everybody in some, some type of social blast.
Put it on our Facebook page as well?
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you, very good.
Get it out as much as you can because a lot of some insurance companies are not up to up.
They may not want their people to know it if they're on a commission basis.
A lot of them don't.
Any other questions?
Well, thank you very much. You have anything else for us?
No, sir.
Okay, appreciate it.
Okay.
First to acknowledge another question.
Gonna acknowledge that letter, it's a letter.
I would make a motion to acknowledge.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay then. Is Tim Brian around?
I'm right here. Waiting on you.
I'm waiting on you.
All right, first item I have this evening is the adjustment of energy distribution facilities for the Bozeman Road project. This is a big number, it's 672,000, 626 dollars and 28 cents. That is our portion, which is currently off of right of way. The overall utility relocation for energy is about 2.6. So they've got a bunch of skin in the game too, but for poles that are off of current right of way.
Make a motion for approval?
Second.
All in favor of approving that? Sure, but second, aye. Okay. What else you got?
Next item is the final plat for Ashby Ridge Phase 2. Uh, this is 1944, 19.4 acres, 35 lots. Uh, the letter of credit for the final wearing surface has been acquired.
Okay.
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, change order number one is the next item for Way and Banks Road culvert replacement. This is for an increase in 5,893 dollars and 70 cents to the project. Most of this is to count for additional excavation to widen the creek a little more than it was originally designed.
Motion.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, next item I have is a request by the engineering department to reduce the speed on Cedar Hill Road between 22 and 463. It's currently 45 miles an hour, we'd like to reduce it to 35 miles an hour. This is because the road is so narrow, it's got tree canopies, and the, you know, the reduction in speed will definitely help with the safety.
I'll make that motion, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, final item I have is the emergency action plan for Sulfur Springs Dam. Anytime there's a dam, there has to be an emergency action plan in case the dam breaks. This is the only dam that the county owns, so we have written up a emergency action plan outlining what should happen if the dam were to break. And so we're asking the board acknowledge that and allow the board president to initial that the board has seen it.
Okay. Motion approved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
That's all I have, thank you.
Uh, Tim?
Yes, sir.
What about the easement? At the subdivision that they wanted to take back a portion of the easement, I guess they're doing some kind of water feature or something, uh?
Is this, is this the one that we're looking at? Can you help me with that?
Yeah. The one you're looking at, yeah.
Okay. Well, we can have it on, we can have it before you next meeting on the 3rd.
All right.
Tim, before you sit down, what, what do we lack on the south part of Dewey's Road, south of the roundabout?
I'm told we're finished up with the, uh, grading work. So next thing will be to pave. Paving operations are shut down tomorrow until after the first of the year. So it'll be right after the first of the year before we can get that started.
All right. Have you been in discussions with the Shelton about finding the money for the north side of the?
We've discussed it, but I'm not sure we have found that money.
All right, well, let's keep discussing it.
All right.
All right, thank you.
Okay. Stop weeks.
Mr. President, board of supervisors, good evening.
Good evening.
I have just a few things. The number 46, the appeal hearing date, we set it last meeting to January 18th. This is gonna cause a conflict with the petitioner, and we wanna set it to February 2nd, 2022.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, next item 47, Deerfield Clubhouse Estates is? Uh next item forty-seven Deerfield Clubhouse Estates is preliminary plat. Saying it's right there by the clubhouse and on Deerfield Drive, Supervisor District Five.
Well?
Well.
My computer gone blank or? I know it is.
You got a sheet right there in front of you?
You got it over there? What what what's on it? Tell me what's on it, Scotty. Is it on my computer?
I have a copy right here if you wanna look at it.
Okay. My my computer might have jumped out there. What is a diffio clubhouse?
Let me find it.
Are that what we talking about? Which item? Let me see your copy. You got it?
I'm I'm looking for it. Let me see if I can grab it real quick.
Item was this?
Item number?
It was item forty-seven. Forty-seven? Okay, I got a copy. Oh, there it is. There it is. It it's gonna come up now. Yes, I've got it. It's gonna come up now. All right. I don't have no problem. Make a motion approve. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, just move on.
Uh Glendale Farms, the preliminary plat for a new subdivision. I think I got the location incorrect, but this is off Yandle Road, since Supervisor District Five.
Mm-hmm. District Five got a lot of growth. Division, but. Got a lot of growth going on.
Right beside Glimwild is where that one is.
It was Scott.
It's right beside Glimwild. I I put the wrong location on there when I was putting it in there.
Is the developer in here?
Uh Mark Jordan.
Mark Jordan?
Yes.
Glendale Farms.
Yeah.
Yeah. Knock it out. Motion approved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Uh next item is Bellmead of Caroline, preliminary plat, and it's located at Lake Caroline, Supervisor District Four.
Move. Is there a second? Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Now Magnolia Point, Part Two, uh preliminary plat for a new subdivision. This is Magnolia Point, right across from Harvey Crawson, Supervisor District Five.
Yep. I'm glad to see that subdivision back on, back on the road. Uh it slacked up one time.
Yes, sir. They did.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
I have a Hampton Hills. This is a, oh, excuse me, Livingston Acre Revised. This is a plat amendment. It's off Livingston Vernon Road, Supervisor.
They gonna be called.
It is District Four.
That's District Four. I'll make that motion. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
And then I have Hampton Hills. It's the gated public access subdivision. Uh it's located in, off Yandle Road, as Supervisor District One and Five.
Yeah, One and Five. Is uh is it designed to the county policy?
Yes, sir. Tim has signed off on it as well as I have.
We have it, we have a schematic of it somewhere. I saw it earlier tonight. I'll make the motion to approve it.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. There you go.
All I have.
All right. Shelton, no, 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 no. Mike Espy, Board Attorney.
Thank you, thank you, uh.
Them all are Hampton Hills for they don't want to speak to this.
What item on the agenda and two items that are not, uh I uh didn't very quickly explain these. The ones on the agendas was the resolution for the legislative session beginning in January regarding objectives for this county. And we brought this up before. You recall the Madison County Business League came in the last meeting and had these three objectives, you know, the reunion Bozeman Road project, the broadband and the water and sewer projects. So this board adopted these as legislative goals and then there was a breakfast earlier with three supervisors there and the the group read the resolution, which you asked me to draft, so that was signed by Mr. Banks. So note to put it in the minutes, I'd like us to acknowledge the resolution that's already been presented, that's been signed, to officially forward it to the legislature.
Okay.
The the objectives for this session, the broadband, the Bozeman Road reunion project and the water and sewer projects.
Question.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Other question? Uh. You have a question? Yeah, question. Question? Let me make, make sure I'm understanding, Mike. This is the resolution that uh Business League put forward.
Yes, and the Business League came and made a presentation. These are the three objectives that um that were, these were adopted by the Business League for presentation, but we had to have a resolution. It'd be great if it was five zero to present to the legislature.
Okay. All right.
What was the dollar amount on the issue text project?
There there's not a dollar amount on this, but I'm.
We we want as much as we can get.
Oh, okay.
There's no dollar value.
So it's high-speed internet, water and sewer and, okay.
Yeah.
All right.
Yeah.
Actually. That's it. Okay.
Is that pass, Mr. Chairman?
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay.
All right. Uh Ms. Jones, do you want me to go through the interlocal, your, this is Madison, City Madison interlocal?
You can.
It was on my desk.
It was on my desk too, so go ahead.
Well, we've been working on this. We've been waiting on the engineer to certify the roads, so I assume these are the roads?
Uh they look like they are, yeah. Tim says yes.
Okay, all right. Uh I know I've been, we've been working on, but it was kind of plug and play. So this is a resolution for the, uh between the county and the city of Madison for those roads in District One. I believe there are ten roads and the amount is four hundred and ten thousand dollars. And this will go to the Attorney General.
Okay.
But we do need to adopt it in our minutes though.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah. So motion to adopt?
Negative.
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. And board to save us some time by having gone to any legal executive session matters, um at the last meeting I mentioned, there's an opioid settlement. There were several, but this is a a big one. And the several attorneys general around the nation all agreed to distribute certain funds from what they call the Jansen's settlement for the open multi-state opioid litigation. So this county is a plaintiff in that litigation. And uh there was a deadline of December fifteenth to participate in the settlement. And you had to dock you sign by the authority empowered to sign. So we rushed and got uh Mr. Banks. We went to Atlanta for the football game to sign on your behalf to enter the opioid settlement. So I want to acknowledge, so that his his signature was received and we are participating, but we need to enter the documents into the record.
Mr. President, I'd make a motion to enter documents into the record.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Seems as if we'll have some money from this in January. I'll let you know how much. Thank you very much.
Hold on, Mike. What what we got there up there to stay? Uh I would like to make a motion to authorize our attorney, uh Shelton, probably a lobbyist.
And our engineer?
An engineer, yeah. To uh come together to build a language to uh send to our state gals and whoever else. Saying that the Madison County is committing ten million dollars uh for broadband and requesting the state to put in twenty-five million. And the next one would be five million for flooding, requesting the state to match it with five million. And the next one would be Bozeman Road. The county is putting in fifteen million and requesting the state to match it with fifteen million. And we need that language yesterday.
That'll be in a resolution.
Yeah, in a resolution.
Ms. Griffin, do you mind including Wagner Engineer with that group that putting this together?
Write up the. That was engineer, so it'd be county engineer and Wagner Engineer.
Okay.
To get that language. And have it, guess back to next week, first meeting in January.
All right.
Oh wait, what's Wagner gonna be doing?
Have him put this language together. And and a booklet.
On our need.
And and a booklet to be able to.
Flooding part anyway and. And and the. And the broadband. Broadband. Okay. Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Okay, let's get that resolution going.
Mr. President, before you get your minds off of that thought process, before our next meeting, Wagner has made us aware that they will need to begin the advertisement for the, with the request for proposals to find a possible commercial entity interested in pursuing broadband with us. So I would like to ask for permission to advertise that RFP for the third-party ISP to uh uh respond to, to be in, to participate in our broadband program.
I offer that motion. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
You'll make sure that James and Joey's group is contacted?
Well, we would, we would notify everyone that we believe would be an interested party once that advertisement is released. Okay, item number fifty-four, Mr. President and Supervisors, is the holiday schedule. Just to remind you, beginning later this week, Thursday, December twenty-third, offices will be closed until eight AM next Monday for the Christmas holiday. The following week, which is still before our next board meeting, Friday, December thirty-first, New Year's Day, the offices will be closed. The garbage schedule will run as normal. Remember, remember there are five different garbage collection contracts in Madison County, so I'm only speaking for our contract. But Christmas and New Years are both on Saturday, so there is no disruption in the week's garbage pickup for our contract this week or next week.
What time, what time on Thursday we closing?
We will not be open Thursday. We will close Wednesday at five PM. Yes.
Get up here and do your thing.
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
Shelton, if you would, make sure that we can get out the message as far as that trash pickup will not change.
Okay.
Garbage pickup as much as possible.
I'm gonna be honest with you. I've been hesitant to post that because I didn't want to confuse people thinking that there was a change. So I I have been, I've been very hesitant to put that out, but we we can put something on our website that says no change in schedule.
Please do. Thank you.
That's good. Good, good.
All right, number fifty-five, please acknowledge a letter from the Lieutenant Governor's Office that indicates that the current recommendation to the legislature is to fully fund homestead reimbursement in this coming session.
Yippee.
Make a motion for approval to acknowledge.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Shelton, how many uh, how many uh billions would that help us or thousands?
I do not have the actual number, but we get somewhere in the neighborhood of one point one million. And I think the last time I checked, that was somewhere in the neighborhood of eighty percent of the number that we should be getting. So it it would be less than a million dollars, but it still should be a couple hundred thousand dollars that we get.
And and this is a big deal for us.
It is a big deal.
It's a lot of money for us.
It is a big deal.
It'd probably be the first time been funded a hundred percent since I've been supervising.
A long time.
So we've been asking for it every year.
Right.
Been the first time it's been funded, it would be funded a hundred percent since I've been supervising. Well, that's been a long time. That was forty years ago, so I can tell you.
Just remember, he's the one that said it was a long time.
It was a long time. I can tell you it was a long time. I can tell by the way I'm walking.
Okay, uh number fifty-six, if you would approve the emergency management performance grant application.
Motion.
Is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
That is an annual grant that we participate in that helps fund emergency management salaries. Item number fifty-seven, we had an employee that went to a local fuel station. Uh their fuel man card would not work. The fuel station would not charge the purchase to the county, made the employee pay. I understand that. The employee now needs to be reimbursed after his fuel man card would not work.
Motion.
Second.
How much is it? Eighty-six dollars and seventy-six cents.
Okay. At uh, you know, unfortunately, that's at three dollars and ten cents a gallon.
Yeah.
So.
All in favor?
Aye.
Uh number fifty-eight, Madison County Annex Repair Bids. Uh we opened bids several days ago. There were three people, three companies that submitted bids. Unfortunately, two of the bids were incomplete. Uh all of the bids, uh there were three, three bids submitted, two were rejected. One of the bids met all of the requirements and is at an amount at a hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars. This is higher than we expected it to be. Material costs seem to be skyrocketing on our vendors right now. We are concerned that if we stop and rebid this, that we will have higher cost rather than better cost. So our recommendation is to award this bid to England Enterprises for a hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars. We will, if awarded, we will come back in January with contract documents with a notice to start date not before February one, because that office is extremely high-traffic in the month of January.
Make a motion for approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We hired a, an architect for the exercise equipment at Sulfur Springs. They have asked for a topography survey. Uh I've got a proposal here from Richard Talbert to do that topography survey for a ma- uh not to exceed six hundred dollars.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
All right. Okay, uh who I got? The son. The son. The son.
Good evening.
Good evening.
All right, the first item I have is number sixty, which is the approval of the budget amendments and the interfund cash transfers.
Motion for approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
The next three items, sixty-one, sixty-two and sixty-three, is for the general claims docket and two payroll dockets.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Number sixty-four is approval of the wedding report from the justice court.
Motion for approval.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Sixty-five is approval of the planning and zoning commission for their per diem.
Motion for approval.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
And the last item, number sixty-six, is the approval of the Fleet Corps Claim Docket for December sixteenth.
Motion on the Fleet Corps Claim Docket.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
All right. Thank you and Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.
You go to Atlanta? Lisa? Did you go to Atlanta?
Yes, sir.
Oh, okay. You saw me? Damn. I didn't think I drank that much. Okay.
First time.
Y'all, y'all got a bad luck. Y'all should stay here. I had fun. Okay, uh run lot.
Yes, sir. I am required to bring before you the following handbook. It's from the Madison County Circuit Clerk. You should have a copy on your computer, and I believe Mr. Espy has approved this. Is this correct, Mr. Espy, or you've just looked at it, not approved? Let me refer that. I believe Mr. Espy has read this. I don't.
I've read it and it's, uh it's, it's been acknowledged.
Can we get a motion to acknowledge?
Motion. Make a motion to acknowledge.
Is there a second? Is there a second? He's, he, we got it over here.
Okay, over there?
Yep, any one of those.
Okay.
Both of them made the motion, both of them seconded, so.
Okay.
Fix it how you wanna fix it. All in favor?
Aye.
Yeah, okay. Got it. Sheriff Randy, there you.
I'm here.
Thanks for the keychain.
You're very, you're very welcome. Couple of things, just real quick. We need to bill DOC uh for their housing and medical costs of their inmates.